Together with all of you, property owners, neighbors and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The city of Lake Forest is committing to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are also detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners and the community at large. I will start with an introduction of the board, starting from my right.
Louis Pickus, 2nd Ward.
Lloyd Culbertson, 4th Ward.
Bob Frankson, 1st Ward.
Jay Kennedy, 4th Ward.
Rich Plonsker, 2nd Ward.
Kevin Lewis, 3rd Ward.
And with us from city staff this evening, Kathy Serniak, Director of Community Development. The first item on the agenda is consideration of the December 8, 2014 meeting minutes. They were long. If anybody wants to delay this, we can do it till next month, but I had a chance to look at them. Are there any comments or does anybody want to delay this? Do I have a motion to approve?
So, move.
Motion to approve. Lou had the motion?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a request for approval of a side yard setback variance for an addition to the residence located at 425 Illinois Road. The owners are, it's a Chicago Title Land Trust. I guess the beneficiaries are James and Laura Dugan, Representative John Krasnodewski, architect. Any conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts. I have one. This petitioner is actually not only my neighbor, but also my attorney, so I will recuse myself and hand the matter over to Mr. Culbertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now would be time for the petitioner to state their cause.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Thanks for listening to our petition tonight. My name is John Krasnodewski. I'm the architect for this project, and it's an addition that we're proposing on the back of this home, and we are requesting a variance from a side yard setback. I'm joined here tonight by Lisa and Laura and Jim Dugan, sorry, the homeowners of 425 Illinois. And let's start out by showing you some pictures of the house and the surrounding area. This is a photograph of the front of the house. This was taken last summer. It's a two-story colonial, two-and-a-half story colonial. Here is the back of the house. This is where the addition is going to occur, and it's an existing garage right now that we're going to maintain and build a family room above it. You can see right now that there is, it's kind of dark, but that is an arbor right now that has latticed walls and a ceiling of timbers, and there's a fireplace there. So our intent is to remove this lattice pergola and this chimney and construct a two, a one-story addition above the existing garage. It's a one-story addition. It's going to have a sloping roof and it's going to be non-conforming by three feet on the north side yard. I'll go into a floor plan to show you some more detail on that. Here is a view of the back of the house. You can see the arbor that's going to get removed. Here is a view on the north side. So again, another view of that arbor. So that's essentially where the addition is going to be. It's a family room addition. It's going to be built on top of that. If you can see the stucco work here, that's the garage. So our addition's going to be built on top of that, and that's going to be stucco as well. All the materials will match of this addition, existing home. This home was built in 1909, has some beautiful details, and our intent is to match those details very closely and make it fit like it's always been there. One of the other things we're going to do is remove this chimney and rebuild it in another location, shift it over slightly so it works better with the family room addition. So there is three feet approximately of this garage that is an existing non-conforming situation, and so we're not going to build any further than that, but just on top of These are photographs that I took today, this morning. They're a little dark, but this is, I want to show you the view from the north. There's a lot of vegetation that's very green all year round, and so I think that's one of the mitigating factors for this addition is that it's barely visible from the street or from the neighbors to the north. Here again is another photograph of it, and you can see there's a lot of nice foliage there. Both neighbors actually were contacted by the Dugans. They came over to their home and took a look at the floor plans. The Dugans met with them, showed them around, and I, this correspondence of their approval of this proposal. Another picture of the side. So here we are. Here's the site plan. This is a platte survey. As you can see, it's a very large lot, 1.2 acres. It's 600 feet, over 600 feet in length and 93 feet in width. The home is right here. You can see that there is the existing addition that we're going to build on top of right there. Here's a blow-up of the site plan. The double-hatched area is the area of non-conformance, and right now, you can see the chimney is centered on the fire, on the family room. The way the chimney is now, it's centered on this garage and deck. So we couldn't leave it. It would be smashed into the corner of the family room, so we didn't feel that was architecturally correct. So this is the floor plan. Here's a blow-up of the floor plan. As you can see, I've dashed in where the setback line is, so you can see that this is the wall that's built on top of the existing garage. It's actually less than three feet of non-conformance, and this chimney projects another 1'4. There's nothing here that will project any further than what is there now. The chimney that there now is actually projecting a little bit further than what we're planning to do. Here's a back elevation. Again, I've tried to really show what's in that plane of non-conformance, and we've hatched it here. You could see, you could see some of the wall and some of the roof form, so I think it's very minimal. We try to keep it to a minimal, to a minimum. The chimney, of course, is also in that setback. We looked at ways, you know, shifting things around, but architecturally, it's very correct to stack, you know, a bearing wall on top of an existing wall rather than try to offset this and create a structural, what we thought was something with not a lot of integrity. It's not practical, not aesthetically pleasing, makes it more expensive. So designing this home from the start, we would always, you know, stack a second floor wall on top of a first floor wall, so this, I think, is something that architecturally Here's a view from the south. You won't see any non-conforming areas from the south. This is where you see this portion is what is facing the north, and that's the area that's non-conforming. So, you know, the neighbors have approved or in support of the project, and we feel there's a real minimal impact, and we feel that since the zoning ordinance was enacted well past when this home was built, that that's really what's caused the hardship. It has nothing to do with what the owners or the previous owners have done to the home. So, you know, the ordinance that came into effect stating about the 15-foot side yard setbacks, I don't know when that was, in the 80s, happened well after this, this home and this project was built. So it doesn't affect the neighbors' light and air quality. I think it's an improvement of the home. It's a family room that the home doesn't really have at the moment. It's, there's a small kitchen and a very small family room, and it actually was for sale for quite some time before the Dugans bought it, and that was the major reason why people refused to buy it. There wasn't really shortcomings of this home. It really didn't have the kitchen in the family room that, that a home like this really, really needs and what, what people want to make a home of this age really successful. So they've got a great idea in making these improvements, and I think because it's so minimal and its impact, there are no other variances or square footage overages that we're asking for, so I hopefully that you'll approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kay. Now turn to city staff to identify the key issues on the petition.
Thank you, Chairman Culbertson. Not much to add. The hardship in this case really is the fact that this area was subdivided prior to the existence of the zoning code. Zoning code was adopted in the 1920s. The lot is configured, although it meets the minimum lot size being over an acre, it is narrower than the minimum lot width that's required today. Under the zoning code today, properties in this district require 125-foot minimum lot width, and the narrower width of this property does make conformance with the side yard setbacks difficult. Not only was the property created through subdivision prior to the zoning code, but the house was always also built prior to the zoning code. So at the time the house was built, it was in full compliance with the limited regulations that were in place at that time. As was stated, the encroachment really is minimal. The existing garage encroaches. We are adding with this addition a single story with the chimney. The chimney will be pulled a bit, a few inches out of the setback from what exists today. The area of the encroachment is highlighted clearly on the materials in your plan. You received one letter in your packet from the property owner to the north at your places tonight. You also received another brief letter in support of the project from the property owner to the south. And you do have findings in your staff report in support of the project, and with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. Do board members have any questions or requests for clarification, either of staff or the petitioner? No questions from me. Questions? I have one. It's three feet, right, is the maximum extent of the?
Well, I have some very specific, the addition itself, it's 2.3 feet, but the fireplace is 3.82 feet of encroachment. So it's, three feet is?
So it's 3.8 feet, but is it, is it within the location or the measurement of the, of the current chimney?
Correct. It's, it comes in closer.
It's less than?
Yeah, it's less than the existing chimney. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Does the roof line extend out about as far as the chimney sticks out? I mean, just from this view right here, it kind of looks like it's pretty close.
Yeah, there's a bit of an overhang on the, on the roof. It's close to the edge of the chimney, but not quite.
Hearing no further inquiries from the board, I would ask if there's anybody in the public who would like to comment on this petition. Not seeing anyone. We'll turn back to the board or staff for any final questions or points of clarification, and we can discuss our thoughts with respect to this petition.
It seems reasonable to me. You're not encroaching any further. You're just going up. It's more attractive structure, so I would be inclined to support it.
Yeah. I think it definitely adds to the existing facility, uh, structure and no further encroachment.
I think we're in general agreement on this one, so.
I think so.
I would entertain a motion to, on the petition.
I'll make a motion that we vote to take this to vote and that we approve based on the recommendations from the city that we allow the second floor addition to be added, but not to encroach any further than the current garage, and that's it.
I second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck on your project.
Thank you very much.
And now we will invite our chairman back to the class. I was encroaching.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of request for approval of a steep slope setback variance for a screen porch addition to the residence located at 367 Bluffs Edge Drive. The owners are Arlington and Karen Gunther. Representative Scott?
Stradif.
Stradif, architect. Anybody intending to give any testimony if you stand, raise your right hand. I guess that would be you. Do you soundly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct that that's your knowledge?
I do.
We'll move on to presentation by the petitioner, Mr. Stradif.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, my name is Scott Stradif, and I will be presenting this petition tonight on behalf of the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Gunther. The primary intent of this petition is to request the approval for an approximately 468 square foot screen porch addition to be located within the steep slope setback line for the property located at 367 Bluffs Edge. The porch addition complies with all other zoning requirements and is within the building scale requirements for this 106,000 square foot lot. The existing home is a one-story modern structure designed by architect John Black Lee in 1958. The existing structure is just under 6,000 square feet, significantly under the 8,545 square foot maximum limitation for this property. Currently approximately 70% of the existing structure is sighted within the current steep slope setback line. In addition, an original stone terrace and retaining wall from the McCormick Estate, also known as Villa Turicum, is currently located on the bluff directly in front of the existing residence and proposed porch. Originally built in the 1940s, this terrace has been restored to its original condition and provides additional retention for the bluff as well in this location. The current owners, Mr. and Mrs. Gunther, have lived in Lake Forest for many years and have lived in this house for the past two years. They love this property and this location, and the primary intent for the property is to preserve the architectural character and quality of the home. The proposed project consists of a modest improvement that will satisfy the needs of the owners. What you see here is a site plan. This is the steep slope setback line. This is all the existing home here, and this is the proposed location of the, of the porch. We've considered several alternatives to the location of this porch. However, given that the majority of the home currently sits within the steep slope setback as well as the proximity of the existing living areas of the home, there are really no realistic alternatives that will eradicate the need for a variation. I'm just going to show you a few photos of the proposed location. This is the general location right here that we're proposing for the porch. There's an existing patio that currently exists, and that porch will be generally in that location. This shows the proximity of the front edge of the house to the edge of the bluff, and then this is a view from the north looking south. The proposed porch is approximately 468 square feet. The porch will be located approximately 30.6 feet away from the steep slope edge. The porch will be constructed on a frost foundation, 3'6" below grade over six equally spaced helical piers. This is a detail of, that was prepared by Mike Black from Black Engineering, showing the helical pier detail, and these piers serve to shore up the foundation and mitigate any lateral pressure from the soil. The interior of the porch will be unexcavated with a concrete slab on grade to support a finished stone surface. The location of this porch will be further away than the existing encroachment of the existing structure, and lightweight machinery will be used for the construction of this porch. We have addressed the criteria regarding steep slopes in the Lake Forest Code in your packets. Here is a summary of those findings. Number one, a historic terrace and retaining wall north, running north and south exists, which does increase slope stability. The terrace and retaining wall have remained stable for the past 75 years. The bluff setting has remained stable and currently shows no indication of instability. And the proposed porch addition will indeed be less non-conforming than the existing residence. We would also address the criteria for approval of a zoning variance. Criteria one, the variance will not result in development that will alter the essential character of the street or neighborhood. The addition will be in keeping with the original architecture and cannot be seen from the street as this is a lot-in-depth property. Criteria two, the conditions upon which the petition for variations are based are unique to the property and are not applicable generally to other properties within the same zoning classification. For the reasons noted previously, this is a unique set of circumstances, given the proximity of the existing structure as well as the historic terrace and retaining wall. Criteria three, the cause of this difficulty or hardship is Section 4615, steep slopes, which was adopted after the construction of this residence. And criteria four, this request will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. The subject property has a significant amount of open space around this lot, and this lot-in-depth property is not visible from the street, so no neighbors would be adversely impacted by these modifications. So for these reasons, we'd like to request that this petition be approved. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Moving on, the staff's report, Ms. Serniak.
Thank you, Chairman Frankson. It is interesting that this is the second steep slope setback variance request that you've seen in two months, when I don't believe in the past five years, a variance request of this type has come before the commission. So they are unusual. Certainly, the scale of this proposal is much, much smaller than the proposal you saw at your last meeting. This is really a request for functional reasons. The property is beautiful, however, it's heavily wooded, and it's my understanding that there are certain times of the year when, to enjoy the outdoors on this particular site, they really need some type of enclosure. This is proposed as a screened-in porch only. It's not proposed to have solid walls. I think that is important as part of this variance, so we have recommended a condition that requires that it remain a screened-in element and not be enclosed. Like the last steep slope setback variance request you saw, city engineer has carefully looked at this before it has even gotten to, to the board, and he has recommended approval. He found that, as Mr. Stradif reviewed, the existing bluff shows no signs of instability and has not over many decades, that the proposed construction technique is appropriate. The city engineer will require detailed construction plans before a permit is issued, and there is also a condition requiring that before we issue a permit, that information on construction vehicle parking, staging of materials, types of equipment that will be used be also provided for review by the city engineer. With that, we do recommend approval. There are findings in support in the staff report. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to questions for the board. Actually, I've got one right off since you're there, Mr. Stradif. In looking through the report and the drawings, I was almost inclined to think that there was nothing really structural about this except for a screened-in area of that existing patio, but then I saw that, that cross-section you put up there, and there, there is something structural to the, to the foundation area, is there not?
There's a frost foundation, so just the outer perimeter, they'll dig a three-and-a-half foot deep foundation with a footing, and, and we'll have helical piers that'll be drilled into the ground underneath the footing.
And that is, that is within the same footprint of the existing patio, so to speak?
Correct. Generally.
And what, for a non-engineer, what is the purpose of that? I mean, you got, you know, patio that's sitting there. Is it, is if the patio would move or concerned that it would kind of alter from its current location, or is it because you're putting up screened-in walls? I mean, what was the purpose?
Well, anytime that you have a roofed structure, it's recommended that you put a foundation underneath it, and it's always been required by the city of Lake Forest for construction with a roof. Otherwise, it, you know, tends to heave. Patios tend to heave and move a little bit, which is not as much of a big deal when it's a patio, but when there's a roof over it, that's when things wobble and, you know. So it's really just to maintain the structural integrity of the, of the roof.
All right. Questions from the board? Anybody?
I have a question. Are there going to be any trees removed or any other sorts of natural structure as part of the construction that's going to be done?
There is going to be one tree removed, and I believe they've already put in a, a request for a tree removal. That tree is going to be replaced with per caliber inch, several other trees. I believe that's, Greg, you might help out me with that, but I believe there's a landscape plan being prepared for that and submitted to the city that satisfies the replacement for that one tree that's going to be removed.
And although there's been no degradation, I guess, of the slope to date, because you're drilling pylons into the ground and you're removing a tree and so forth, there's, I assume there'll be some sort of additional testing and ongoing testing of what the impact of that is going forward, or what does the city require for, something like that?
The city will require the detailed construction plans before a permit's issued. The city will do onsite inspections during the construction, and then will require as built, and will do a final inspection of the property.
Thank you. I know that the piers haven't been designed yet, but there's any idea of how deep you think they'll have to go?
With the helical piers? You know what? I'm not sure of the, of the exact length of the piers.
It's 13 feet. Bottom pier at 13 feet. So 10 foot, 10 feet below the foundation, roughly?
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, that's, that's a 10-foot.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. Kathy, if, if, if somewhere down the road, the owner wanted to construct a glass porch or put walls where these foundations are being put, what would be required by the city at that juncture?
If you approve this with the condition that it remains a screened porch, then if they wanted to enclose it, then they would need to come back and ask for a, a further variance to the steep slope setback, because that would be altering the structure. And depending on what they want to do, if, if they were wanting to build solid walls, that would then require a different type of foundation. What's proposed here is the frost wall. The city engineer will take that all into account as part of approval of the, the permit for?
So the foundation that's being installed, or this frost line protection, is not load-bearing to the extent that it could accommodate an enclosed porch?
I'm not sure that's true. I think it could, you could enclose it with this foundation, but I think, I think what you're being called to do is to, I guess, put that in as a, I mean, actually, Kathy, you should probably speak to that more than me. I don't know what the legal aspect is.
I'm not certain that the code would allow the complete enclosure of the porch with a, with simply a frost wall foundation, but the, the plans that are submitted will indicate the type of foundation, will indicate what the, what the structure's going to be, and that's what will be approved. So any change from that will require them to come in and go through a, a process to amend that approval.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Moving on, the public testimony, not to exceed five minutes per. Moving on to public testimony, not to exceed five minutes per speaker. All righty. Why don't we come to kind of questions, comments from the board on this? You know, kind of with the, where you were going with this, I mean, I was thinking the same thing. I'd be inclined to consider what we've been given tonight, which is, it's going to be a kind of a screened-in porch and not a, not a wall, not a glass, not a walled-in structure. That's what they're asking for, and I think that's, if we're inclined to approve it, that's, that's what we approve. If it changes in the future, come back, I guess.
I agree.
Obviously, it's a very, it's a very wooded area. I don't, we don't have any, I don't think we have any correspondence or anybody objecting, and I don't see it being very objectionable, but I would think we'd want to approve what we have in front of us and call it a day at that. Any other comments?
Same extent as the existing patio, so not going any further out.
Yep.
So...
Chairman, I would move that we recommend approval of the variance based upon the findings and the staff report, including the recommendations that the screened porch shall not be enclosed with walls, partial walls, or glass. The building permit should be required, and this information should be shown on the building permit, meeting the city engineer's requirements, and they should meet the requirements relating to the construction access, parking staging, et cetera, as stated in the staff report.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All who oppose? Petition's approved. Congratulations. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of a request for approval of a front yard setback variance for a second-story addition over an existing first floor at 1450 West Old Mill Road. Owners and representatives are Frank and Becky Pontero. Any conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts? Anybody intending to testify in this matter? Dan, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that testimony you're about to give is true and corrected, thus your knowledge?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Presentation by the petitioner, Mr. Pontero.
Hi. How are you? I'm Frank Pontero, and I, along with my wife Becky, have lived at 1450 West Old Mill for about 14 years. The home was originally designed as a gatehouse in the 20s, and thereby, it is located very near the street. Sometime after it was originally built, it became part of Lake Forest. It was originally built in Everett, Illinois. The zoning was applied to it, and unfortunately, the majority of the existing footprint is within the setback, which is why we're here tonight. We're asking to add a second-story addition over the existing footprint, over a one-story component of the house that's existing. And with that, I'll introduce you to Steve Rugo, who is the architect working with us on the project, and he'll talk you through the details and answer any questions.
And I guess we'll start with a couple of pictures here. This would be the front portion of the house, which is perpendicular to the road. And just to kind of put it in perspective, the front edge of this is about 22 feet from Old Mill Road, and the 50-foot setback would be about here, just to be, just to get everybody in. And on the reverse side, along, this is the one-story portion. This was a piece that was put on in the 60s, this portion right here, within, within the And if, site plan and survey, there's a small, single room connected by a wall along the road at that point, and the area that we're really speaking about is above this portion right here. Existing first floor plan, no changes. Again, the area that we're, oops, excuse me. The area we're talking about is above the dining room and the kitchen here. This portion has a sloped roof. This has a flat roof, just if you looked at the picture, if there wasn't enough clarity in any of that. Existing second-floor plan, two small bedrooms, child's room, master bedroom, shared bathroom. Maybe somewhat of an understanding why there might be a desire for a second bath and the third bedroom. And the goal is to put it on top of that area, where one would extend the existing dormer down this face, same vocabulary, and the same pitch of roof on this dimension as we would have here, tying into the existing ridge line here. And the center line of the ridge would be under that French door. So, existing, this is the one-story portion, second story with the same dormer, above same materials. This is wood siding on the dormers. Everything else would be stucco. Area looking into the yard, which one doesn't see from the road, existing elevation along the road, new elevation along the road. This is the point of the existing ridge line of each portion. That is the existing rear portion where it's happening. This is the elevation along Old Mill Road, so that mass would be here. And as you, and this is the other outbuilding on the site, which is a single sort of exterior dining area?
Originally garage.
That is used in the summertime, and fundamentally, in the summer period of time, when there leaves, it's almost invisible. Additional outbuilding, the current garage, secondary building and structures. This is all pushed to the road because it was a gatehouse, in keeping with many of those kind of properties that don't necessarily conform once they've been subdivided. Details within the eaves, the windows, the arched-headed windows, shutters, and all things are duplicated throughout, as would colors and molding profiles.
Sure. So, Steve described maybe the biggest hardship, which is having a 15-year-old daughter and sharing a bathroom on the second floor. So, that's a little bit rough around the edges, but the, the time we've spent in the house, we've done a lot of restoration work and a lot of repair work to it, and spent a lot of time, you know, thinking through where we could add this addition and do it thoughtfully, and do something that is sensitive to the architecture aesthetically, in keeping with the property. The entire Lasker Estate, and this property included, has a certain European farm vernacular in the location and the placement of the buildings. So, you know, really, what we'd like to do is expand the house without expanding the footprint, and Steve and I and my family have spent a lot of time thinking through this, and we feel that this is the least impact on the existing property, maintaining the historic visual character of the streetscape, as well as the integrity of the existing building.
All righty. Thank you. We'll move on to staff's report. Ms. Surniak.
Thank you, Chairman Franksen. This is one of those unique treasures that we're fortunate to have in Lake Forest. This structure was originally on an estate of almost 500 acres. It was one of many outbuildings. As the estate was subdivided, this structure and others remained, and not surprisingly, most of the structures that remain are nonconforming with current setbacks. What's proposed here is, as was described, really a way to continue to allow this structure to be adaptively reused to meet the needs of the current family and the family who's lived in the house now for 14 years. The impact, although it will be visible from the streetscape, the mass, the addition is done in a way that really minimizes the mass, is consistent with the overall design, materials, and architectural detailing of the house. You do have a recommendation in the staff report and support. We did not receive any correspondence or hear from any neighbors with concerns about this project. Staff does recommend approval. Thank you.
All right. So, we'll move on to questions. I have one right off. This did not have to go to the HPC?
Exactly.
It does not. None of the Lasker Estate properties are, there's no historic district out there, and none of them are locally landmarked. So, no, it does not. It does, as proposed, it does meet the design criteria, it does meet the standards, we do that type of review. If we had a concern, it could be sent to the Building Review Board, but the design is really strong and consistent with all the standards, so just your review is required.
Can I follow up on that? So, it won't go before BRB either. There is one design element that doesn't exactly thrill me, and that is the large dormer that's part of the addition. It's just, to me, Kathy, and to the petitioner, it looks a little oversized in scale relative to the, which side? The proposed, this would be the...
H3.
Yeah. It's a...
I can speak. I think if we...
Second story, it's a street view. It's the street view. It's the southern.
So, if you look at the elevation...
That one doesn't excite me either, if you back up one, because the dormer sizes are...
Well, this is existing. This is the way Adlerin attended it. It was built in the 20s this way. So, and, you know, the main facade of the house obviously had these peaked dormers, and then when you go to the subordinate sides, this is the existing shed dormer that was put on the house. So, what we're doing is reflecting that exact pitch and height. It also...
Exact?
It is. And if you go to one more, let's see if we can get it there. One more. There you go. So, the dormer that you see on the right side of this elevation is existing.
Right.
And what we're doing is simply mimicking that on the front side. It does allow for headroom within the space. It's, the scale of the home is rather intimate on the second floor, so simply to get headroom within that space, that dormer's necessary.
Part of the issue with continuing the shed dormer, if you follow this line right here that comes through...
Right.
This is the existing shed dormer. That's the only way we can use what is currently a closet to get into the space without, because of not wanting to touch the existing stair. Part of it is a device to turn the inside corner.
This is on...
Quite a lot of discussion about the dormer facing the street, whether it should be one of these or one that would give us a little more volume.
Could I have a point of clarification? On that image there, the street is to the right, is that correct?
That's correct. It runs vertically.
Old Mill Road would run in this direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see where, on the, what you call the side elevation, that you're basically cutting the existing dormer in half and accommodating the addition, right?
Correct.
Okay. And, but you're telling me this, the streets, the street-side dormer is at exactly the same scale as what's being left behind?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll buy into that. Thank you. Dumb question, why, so this did not go to the BRB? Doesn't require, not require it to the BRB?
It does not. Again, the, the design guidelines are met in this petition, and although it is not in the historic district, we did review it based on the standards that the commission would review it under, and it really is consistent with those standards.
And you know what? I mean, we're only here to do our job, and I do, but just a question.
It just strikes me, as it obviously did you, it seems unusual we get a request like this, and the architecture isn't being reviewed by either HPC or BRB.
Yep.
I can't remember seeing it.
I don't know. Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to public testimony on this matter, not to exceed five minutes per speaker. All right. Any, why don't we move on to final questions, final comments from the board? You know, I'm, and I'm kind of scratching my head here on this with what you already said, but we can only do our job tonight. In one, in one place in here, it almost looked like the property is over the property line, but it's obviously not.
That's, that's actually was going to be my comment. That was my problem with this upfront, where on comments section, it's not really so much as a question, but as, as you noted, an observation that, that if you extended where it appears that the property line is based on the neighbor's property, this, this house is actually within the right-of-way line extended, which would mean, in theory, if the road were to get cut through based upon the neighbor's, this house would be in the street. And to me, that was potentially problematic, but looking back at the history of the property, and as the petitioner stated tonight, that it was intended to be a gatehouse, and it was built right up on the road, and I, I think that kind of creates a bit of a mitigating circumstance. I too, as was previously stated regarding the bulk, I think is maybe the way to describe it, when, when you compare A and B on the existing and proposed elevations on that street view, it certainly seems like that this house is all of a sudden going to tower over the street. But I think following those roof lines, it does create a little bit of a setback. So, Chairman, I share your perhaps hesitation, but I certainly don't know that requiring them to keep the addition behind this even theoretical right-of-way line would necessarily be reasonable either. So, I, I'm not sure that this is ideal, but from a standpoint of the setback issue, I, I can see myself agreeing that this might be a fair variance.
Yeah, it probably is ideal as it's going to get. I guess it's, it's just kind of considering the historical, you know, nature of this, you know, as you drive up, you go, oh, we've seen, we've seen like this before, and this, you know, kind of old, you know, gatehouse estate type of property, and, oh, wow, that's... But again, I, you know, I think I can, I can support it, I'm just asking some questions, a little bit of a head-scratcher.
And I think if you, if you don't support things like this, then what happens is people are hesitant to invest, and you get old properties like this that become older and older over time, and they...
Yeah, but you take, you know, you take them one at a time, and, yeah, I mean, you're right. You're right, but...
Could you talk about the exterior materials that you're going to use for the addition? Just how they're going to match and what you're...
Painted common brick.
So, in the last renovation work that we've done, we actually sourced the, the exact size and same color of Chicago common brick and used reclaimed brick. We'll use real tongue-of-groove wood. We'll use real windows. We'll use cedar shake. We'll use half-round gutters and downspouts. The materials will be indistinguishable from the original materials of the house.
So, now, as you, as you look at the house from Old Mill... Can, can you just... I'm just trying to imagine what it's going to look like. I didn't...
Sure. And that, you know, unfortunately, with two-dimensional elevations, you know, you wind up with something like this, not realizing that that ridge is actually 15 feet back from the face of the... from the face of the first floor. So, you know, really, the, the site condition and the location of that ridge is really not on Old Mill. It's well into the back of the house or well into the side yard of the house.
And it's a scale thing. It's relatively modest, because that ridge lines to about 25 feet, which is, you know, smaller than the room we're in, you know, in terms of the vertical point. So there is that illusion that it's perhaps taller than reality.
So the front wall of the addition on Old Mill is not going to line up with the front wall of the first floor? It's going to be pushed back, you're saying?
Well, not just the whole...
The way that that ridge line comes back, will be back from the face?
This sits on the existing, there's already a roof that goes to here. You know, in the smaller, because it only covers half of it.
Got it.
So it's really kind of duplicating this on this end, is essentially what happens.
So the slope from the front wall on Old Mill will really remain the same as it is, and it'll just extend?
That's correct, it will extend up about, I think it's six or seven feet.
So what's the pitch on that roof?
This is what you're speaking of, and it's an accurate statement. It is certainly, in a two-dimensional drawing, it has that effect that it's, you know, you were reading it as a wall. If we, perhaps it would help, let's go to here, that it's really, in this perspective, it's going to feel like right about here is where that ridge line's going to read when it sits back, because you're going to have to take into account that it's halfway, it's almost back to here, to that edge right there. So it's likely to be, it's going to sit under where the wire is in terms of the perspective.
And any change to that wire or the trees in front or anything like that?
No, but...
Nothing.
We would love it if there were.
If the wire went away.
There are utilities that run below ground right next to the house and above ground right next to the house.
What's the pitch of the roof?
I'm uncertain what the pitch is, other than to say it's the same pitch as the existing home.
Okay. Well, I think we've drilled it enough. If we look at again what our job is and the standards for giving a variance, I think it probably, my opinion is it probably passes the smell test and doesn't change the character of the neighborhood or impede a lot of light, or, I mean, there's a bit of hardship here, and it's not conforming as it sits now. So I don't know if you all agree.
Yeah, I'd be inclined to support it, because I think it's, it's not going to impede, and it's not going to... I was, I was a little concerned about how, how it was going to push forward onto Old Mill, but I, I feel better about it now, as you've explained.
It's really receding, not the new portion is receding the rest of it.
I'd be inclined to support it, I think.
It's not that close to Old Mill, but that's just what the house is.
Yep.
It is what it is, and so this doesn't appear to be making anything any worse, so...
Yep.
Yeah, I think I'd feel different if they were going straight up with that wall adjacent to Old Mill, where that kind of matched that, where we see that chimney now. If that became the facade, that would maybe feel like too much bulk, but as it's been pointed out, I think that that's a good use of that space.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the variance as submitted per the information provided in the package and the information presented by staff.
I'll second that.
Kevin got the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Final item on the agenda. Opportunity for the public to address the zoning board of appeals on matters not on the agenda. All right, anything from Kathy?
Nothing. I don't believe, at this point, we have any items submitted for your February meeting. So we'll, technically, the deadline has passed, but we will give it another week or so and let you know.
All right.
Can, the item six on our agenda was postponed. Is there a reason for that or something going forward with that?
Item six was postponed at the request of Lake Forest Academy. I actually have an early morning meeting with them tomorrow. They're, they're just stepping back, rethinking how they can best, best present their plan and address some of the concerns. So it was, it was a master plan that they wanted to come forward with to, forward with to set the stage, so there's no urgency, and I think they wanted to be sure. So I guess it's possible that could come back.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned.